Put your closing call offer indication followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Father, while we stand here thanking you for your love and ask you for wisdom and guidance, we also ask for relief and comfort for the many souls who are suffering as a result of the hurricanes, tropical storms, tornadoes, flooding, wildfires, earthquakes, and let us not forget to remember that today is 9/11. Lord, we ask for your grace and mercy upon us. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Doster, please call the roll.
Yes, Ms. Lloyd?
Here.
Mr. Lockhart?
Here.
Ms. Twine?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Waddington?
Here.
Mr. Poehl?
President.
Mr. Brady? Commissioners, first I would ask that you, someone might make a motion to appoint Ms. Doster as the acting clerk for purposes of this meeting.
So moved.
Second.
It's been a motion, second discussion. A lot of objection, the motion will be approved. And hearing no objection, the motion is approved. And Mr. Brady, just before the meeting began indicated that he was responding to a lack of emergency at Sandusky High School, what a sure when he'd be able to get here. And so until such time as he arrives, someone might make a motion to excuse him.
So moved.
Second.
It's been a motion, second discussion. A lot of objection, the motion will be approved. And hearing no objection. We turn now to our old minutes. Commissioners, you have before you the minutes of our meeting of August 28, 2017. What did you pledge?
Mr. Chairman.
Waddington.
I move that we accept the minutes of the August 28 meeting and dispense to the formal reading.
Second.
It's been a motion and second discussion. A lot of objection, the motion will be approved. And hearing no objection, the motion is approved. And we turn now to audience participation. Anyone wishing to address any of our regular business agenda items, please step to the microphone, share with your name, address, and thoughts, please.
These are from the last meeting. These are outdated.
The ones at the door are not updated. Apologies, apologize for that. They are online. Did you have a chance to review them online? I'd be happy to give you my copy or...
I got it, Mr. Murray.
Yeah, we're all looking at you. Yeah, we're all looking at you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tim Schwanger, 362 Sheffield Way. The question I have is on the consent agenda item number A, letter A. I missed the last meeting, so this is the second reading. The question I had, was this only, the backflow devices, did that only pertain to commercial facilities, or is there going to be a time in the future where the residents are also going to be required to put in a backflow preventer? Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address? I'll give you a moment to take a look at those. If I recall, by the way, while we're waiting for anyone to have a chance to look at those, if I recall your explanation correctly at the last meeting, it was only as to commercial entities that were being impacted by this, and those residential entities which have separate meters for things like filling swimming pools or irrigation. That's correct, okay. Did you catch that, Mr. Schwanger?
Yes, thank you.
So I think what we'll do is we'll proceed with the consent agenda, and then we'll take a pause for the regular agenda, before the regular agenda items, given the fact that the copy of the agenda was not current at the back door. So we get to those items in case anybody has some additional questions. So, would you present the consent agenda items, Commissioner Doster?
Yes. Consent agenda, item A, amendment to code of ordinances regarding backflow prevention and cross-connection control. Item B, addendum to contract with Erie County Job and Family Services for transportation services with the Sandusky Transit System. Item C, change order number one for tree removal and trim project with tree experts. It's a time extension only. Item D, payment to Ohio EPA for license to operate Big Island Water Works during calendar year 2018. Item E, payment to Ohio EPA for annual discharge fee for wastewater treatment plant during calendar year 2017. Item F, authorization to dispose of bicycles and other city equipment at public auction. Item G, accepting tax amounts and rates as determined by the Erie County Budget Commission. Item H, payment to ODNR for submerged lands leases for Sandusky Sailing Club property. Item I, payment to ODNR for submerged lands leases for Midstates Bayfront Development property.
Thank you, Ms. Doster. Commissioners, are there any of these items which any of you would wish to remove from the consent agenda to the regular agenda? If not, then would someone care to make the motion to accept the consent agenda items?
Mr. Chairman.
Waddington.
I make a motion to accept the consent agenda items A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, as presented to the City Commission on the consent agenda and shall take effect in accordance with the section requesting the ordinances and our resolutions, whether it be in accordance with section 13 or section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Motion and second discussion. I would note briefly with respect to items H and I, that those are two years of submerged land lease payments, and Mr. Solway explained that the reason for that is that given the litigation at the time, the state decided not to charge or issue the charges or invoices for that, and so that's on a catch-up basis, and that is being made at this point in time. So the city and Sailing Club and Midstates have done exactly what they were required, but the state's temporary clause is we're paying whatsoever.
Correct, and we've reimbursed already in full by both parties, and so we're...
Thanks, Mr. Solway. Any other questions or comments? Doster, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
And now on the ordinances and resolutions.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
The ordinances and resolutions are adopted. Would you, oh, we're going to take a pause. Anyone wishing to comment on any of the regular agenda items now that we've distributed that rather abbreviated agenda for today? I wish we could smooth these things out, so instead of having three regular agenda items one week and 15 the next, but it's just the nature of city business. If not, then, Ms. Doster, would you present item number one, please?
Item number one for our first reading is an ordinance amending Part III, the traffic code, Title IX, pedestrians, Bicycles, and Motorcycles, Chapter 379, Golf Carts, are the codified ordinances in the manner and way specifically set forth here in Zillow.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Twine?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the first reading.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. So at one of the recent meetings, I think it was the last meeting, we had a discussion about extending the existing golf cart ordinance, which Mr. Waddington championed, I don't know, about 10 years ago now, something like that, to cover gators and other items, which we can now cover under the auto revised code. And this was legislation that the city requested, and this was from the commission requested, and this was specifically spearheaded by Commissioner Lockhart, who saw a need to expand this. Mr. Lockhart, any comments about the legislation?
At this time, I think that the legislation could match the state's legislation, which is a road that is 35 miles per hour or less could accommodate golf carts or other utility vehicles. I think that's the main change now is utility vehicles, I think, that could be inclusive of gators or mules, which are a safer vehicle. They have a road cage, and they may go slightly faster than golf carts.
Mr. Harris, anything to add, or Chief, anything to add? I will note, I have a concern. I'm going to be a yes vote on the legislation. I have a concern, and I'd invite some comment by the public or any of the department heads on this subject. It just seems to me that there's a difference between a golf cart and a utility vehicle on a four-lane road with a speed limit of 35 miles an hour. And my concern is, just given the nature, Cedar Point Causeway and Cleveland Road, or really, I guess Butler Street's another one, are the only spots where there's a two-lane road, and it's 35. But my concern is that if you have a slow-moving golf cart, not a utility vehicle, but a golf cart, and someone changes lanes to avoid that, you then can potentially have a vehicle that, you know, in all honesty, or realistically, I should say, is often going to be going 45 miles an hour, and they're coming upon a vehicle that's going 30 miles less, slower, and I think they can see that rather abruptly. So that's a concern that I have. I don't know, Mr. Harris, if there is a way to distinguish between those situations in the legislation, but I would invite some comment and some further thought on that, as indicated, I'll be a yes vote today.
To you, Commission, President, to the Commission, this legislation was adopted, and adopted from Huron's ordinance that has adopted this ordinance with regard to the 35 miles per hour or less. I did and do share some of the same concerns of having slower-moving vehicles on roads that are 35 miles per hour. I think what could be done, and there are mules and there are utility vehicles that can go over 35 miles per hour. We can do it internally, but I think a check and balance to it would be to make sure that the mule, or ATV, or utility vehicle that's operating on those roads has the capabilities of traveling at least 35 miles per hour, so that you won't run into that issue. I don't know if the Chief and the police have any concerns, but I don't want to step on Mr. Waddington's shoes about his champion golf carts, but 10 years ago, but I have issues with a lot of vehicles on roads that aren't motor vehicles, but that's just me as a lawyer.
He has big shoes he can step on.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Waddington?
Has there been any accidents?
There hasn't been any accidents.
And that's in 10 years? That's pretty good record. There aren't quite a few out there now, right? From the islands that come over, I've noticed, do they...
We have a few. There's not an exorbitant amount like the islands have, but we do have a couple people that use them regularly.
Further, it's got some...
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Poehl.
I support the legislation. Concerns about slower-moving vehicles are, there's chances in life to things that that can happen. We have had accidents on the Causeway, the Shawsay, whichever, with just regular cars that drive same speed. And the concept here is we're moving our community supposedly toward attracting folks who are treated just like a summer resort with golf carts and things of that nature. The Causeway itself, I think it's a private road. Cedar Point wants to limit golf carts, they can do the same thing they do with pedestrians and bicycles, which is add a word to the sign that says no golf carts. It doesn't require that the entire city have a, suffer with a legislation that, as has been pointed out, there haven't been any accidents in the, I'm not sure that we're, I think we're, this is overkill. If we're, if I thought there was going to be a flotilla of golf carts going to a golf course near Cedar Point, I would say, yes, the risk has gone up. But once in a while, a golf cart might, for some reason, go across that Causeway. If it's at 8:00 in the morning, there's no traffic there anyway, and it just doesn't seem to me that we should be making a rule that covers, that first of all isn't established as a real safety problem, and just for one little small stretch of road. And even Butler Street's the same way. It's 200 yards, 300 yards down Butler Street. So, thought.
Further questions or comments? Doster, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
That amendment passes, or that ordinance, excuse me, passes on the first reading. Item number two, please.
Item number two is an ordinance authorizing and directing payment to the Treasurer of State, Ohio Department of Transportation, for the maintenance of State Route 2 in the city of Sandusky by the Ohio Department of Transportation for the period of July 1, 2016, through June 30, 2017, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Lloyd?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules and in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion.
I thought that's what I said was wrong with that.
Mr. Klein, this is a annual item, as I recall, in which we actually pay the state to take care of that part of Route 2 that is within the city limits, and we've been doing this for a long, long time. Questions or comments, Commissioners? Ms. Doster, would you poll the commissioners first on the motion, please?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number three, please.
Item number three is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Pitt Concrete Masonry L.P.D. of Chesterlin, Ohio, for the 2017 sidewalk repair and replacement project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take effect, immediate effect, in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Twine?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules and in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. Mr. Klein, while we start out with asking, by asking you to provide us with an overview, and we ran into some hiccups with the last year's program, and I understand you've taken some steps to be able to iron out some of those things. We have a smoother process this year. That was a big learning experience, and we have for some period of time, I mean, just by way of background, for a lot of years, we disinvested in our sidewalks. For many, many years, we had a program that was 50/50 with the residents, and if they, see, we'd put up 50% of the money for repairs, and reds, we'd put up their 50%, by way of an assessment. We disinvested, didn't pay our fair share for a long time, and we're still paying some catch-ups. So with that in mind, could you give us the background on this legislation, please?
Certainly. Mr. President, this is the sidewalk legislation to repair roughly 27 properties this year. Right now, it's complaint-based. We still go out and do the inspections, still go out when somebody calls in, and we make sure that there aren't any immediately adjacent properties that need repair next to these addresses. We also go by the ADA committee and the recommendations that that committee makes to us, and there were two large intersections downtown that were made through that board to get improvements because of steep curb ramps. Those intersections are on Market Street, at Jackson, and at Wayne, across from Subway and near the register there. So those intersections will be addressed this summer, also, or this fall, also another intersection, or another location that will be addressed, that we've received quite a few complaints, is in front of the Reeder Building. So those are three large properties that we are addressing. Some things that we have done to ensure that we didn't, that we don't get the same change orders as last year, we rolled some of the unit prices that got a little out of control last year, the reseating, the backfill, the topsoil, those things. We rolled them in together to make sure that those were accounted for, and now it's on the contractor. One of the problems that we're having, though, is that the cost of cement has gone up 15 to 20% this year. That's why, one reason why the reduced cost, or the reduced number of properties that we could fit into it. Another reason for that is that we have curb and gutter. Last year, we didn't really have curb and gutter, but because of the curb ramps, we have to do the curb and gutter as well. So those quantities have gone up with regards to that. We've also added some line items for the contractor to make sure that they don't have to go back two, three, four, five different segments of sidewalk like they did last year to account for drainage. We've gone out, we've shot those, we've taken the elevations, and we've accounted for that in this bid, rather than making the contractor do that work in the field. So we still would like to award that contingency of $8,000. It's at alternate number one. That brings it with, to $92,198.50, but with bidding and miscellaneous costs, the total would be $94,000 for this project. But we'd like to award that, just in case there are incidentals, if there are other properties nearby that we notice, things that come up that Mr. Waddington brings up at that one location that he's brought up a couple times, you know, things like that that we get routine complaints on. So if there is a little bit extra, we'd like to be able to spend that money towards the end of the project, and make sure that we fall within that budget.
Thank you, Ms. Klein. Commissioners, questions or comments?
Mr. Chair?
Lockhart.
I would like to thank Mr. Klein for taking attention to detail in the ADA requirements. I'm a liaison to the ADA, and I know exactly the two streets that he's talking about. We had residents experiencing, when they were going down wheelchairs, they were almost, well, pretty much falling out of the wheelchairs because of the ramps. And so this would be a great, great thing to do for them, to help them get through there, because it's their only means of travel throughout downtown. As you know, we have a lot of seniors here downtown, so it is super excellent that we can get this done. Thank you.
Further questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Poehl.
How long is the waiting list?
An estimate, through you, Mr. Chairman, an estimate on the waiting list is probably in the range of four to five years.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to, at some point, suggest that we accelerate getting this taken care of. The five-year window, just to catch up, will continue to get farther and farther behind, so for next year's budget, consider.
Through the Commissioner, President Commissioner, Poehl, Director Klein, recently, when he was bringing this, and I talked about ways that we might potentially expand the program. One way, obviously, is to look for more funding as we do the capital budget, and we will dive into that this year. Another option that has come up is the potential of doing a 50/50 assessment program in the future, which is, I believe, what Sandusky used to do, and what a lot of cities do, which is a way to leverage the local dollars, and you can have residents participate in the cost of the sidewalks, you know, over a five-year assessment of their property. And so there's a few different ways we can do it, but it's something that we've talked about wanting to do more. In a perfect world, maybe we could up the local government contribution while also looking at an assessment, and then, you know, leveraging even more so the costs. And those programs have traditionally been popular in other communities, although we'd want to have a conversation with the public and commission, obviously, before we recommended something along those lines.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Lloyd?
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poehl?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted, and these are regular business items. We turn the meeting now over to Mr. Whoopsir for his report.
Thank you, Commission President Murray, Commissioners, audience, and staff. I will start with the donations. First, a donation of $1,666 was received from Cynthia Carrier Vejda for a bench in memory of her parents, Mary Kay and Earl L. Carrier. The bench will be located in Washington Park to the right of the gazebo. I ask for a motion to accept that donation.
So moved?
Second.
Then a motion and second discussion. A lot of objection, the motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. With our thanks for that gift.
Thank you. Moving on to the police department. The Sandusky Police and Fire Departments will be joining forces once again for the Sub-Zero with a Hero at Toff's Dairy on September 14 of this week, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Again, that's Thursday, September 14, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. This is the annual evening event of ice cream and conversation, mirrored off of the coffee with the cop. For those who love ice cream, please join us for this event at Toff's Dairy this Thursday at 6:00 p.m. Also, Logan Muth and Ronte Hill Morton were sworn in as full-time officers on August 31st. We'd like to welcome our new officers onboard. For finance, the next scheduled finance committee meeting is this Friday, September 15, 2017, at 7:45 a.m. Again, this Friday, in the commission chambers at 7:45 a.m. Moving on to Public Works, an informational meeting for the Gartland Avenue Reconstruction Project will be held tomorrow at 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. in the conference room at the Service Center at 1024 Cement Avenue. Again, that'll take place tomorrow at 6:00 p.m. in the conference room at the Service Center, located at 1024 Cement Avenue on the west side. Invitations have been sent to all property owners and tenants on Gartland to provide a summary of the upcoming construction project to the public and impacted stakeholders. Also, the Division of Streets and Traffic met with staff from Norwalk and the city of Cleveland to gain information and insight for fine-tuning our leaf collection and snow removal processes. Not all ideas can be implemented immediately, but it is allowing us to review our current procedures to make sure that we're following best practices and being proactive rather than reactive. So we will be ready for the upcoming snowfall season and leaf season. Also, because of the future school building, the city and Erie County Regional Planning have requested that ODOT complete a safety study for Hayes Avenue from Perkins Ave to Columbus Ave. Recommendations are being analyzed for potential implementation as part of the planned healthy Hayes Corridor and safe routes to school projects that are included in our bicentennial master plan to ensure safe pedestrian access for students, hospital employees, and anyone using the Hayes Avenue Corridor. Finally, Public Services. Just another reminder that the drive-through drop-off day has been scheduled for Saturday, September 30. Again, Saturday, September 30. If you have any questions about this event, please contact 419-627-5884. That's 419-627-5884. And our Department of Public Services will answer your questions. That concludes my remarks for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whoopsir. Commissioners, questions or comments for the city manager? Just one comment, Mr. Whoopsir, I was privileged to be able to attend the dedication of two Habitat Homes yesterday, one on Wilford Street and one Clay Street. And, you know, the city made contributions to make both of those homes possible, and folks there, not only were they thrilled to become homeowners and live in our city, but the folks from Habitat were just so complimentary about the assistance that we received, that they received from all departments of the city, yours included, Mr. Klein, Mr. Lasco. They just wanted me to pass along those compliments. They said, it's not like that in every community. They go to some communities, and they are really not terribly welcome, they don't get the best cooperation, and so kudos to your staff. And then they did pull me aside, said, you know, we have some problems with a couple of the neighbors. And they showed me what the issues were, and there are code compliance violations. And I said, well, you know, next time, make a note of that early on, and contact Mr. Lasco's office and the code enforcement folks. And so I let them know that today, and they got on it right away, and Habitat was extremely appreciative of that. So that's the kind of service that we can provide, and do provide on a regular basis. It goes unnoted most of the times, but they certainly noted it, and I very appreciate that. So, thank you. Other questions or comments for the city manager? Any items of old business? Any items of new business?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Waddington?
I talked to Commissioner Brady on Saturday early, and we were bouncing around ideas about how we could help out the folks down south with the flooding, the Houston area and the Florida area. And I would like to make a motion, possibly to send a message to the rest of Ohio and
Other questions or comments for the city manager? Any items of old business? Any items of new business?
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Waddington. I talked to Commissioner Brady on Saturday early, and we were bouncing around ideas about how we could help out the folks down south with the flooding, the Houston area and the Florida area, and I would like to make a motion, possibly to send a message to the rest of Ohio and other communities, that we donate $1,000 to the American Red Cross.
Second.
It's been a motion and second, discussion. Now, I know how early you and Brady are up sometimes. If you call me that early, we're going to have words, but I know he supports that motion, although that does seem to look like he's going to miss most of the meeting tonight at this rate. So, I certainly support that motion. I think it's a great thing to do. It's a small gesture, but those are our neighbors, too, in a larger sense.
And then, if I may, Mr. Chairman, we have to look at, someday, that could be us, you know, this could be... And if you could help somebody else out, I'm big in the United Way, and also, through church and that, you know, as far as giving back and helping others out. I just think this could send a message. I'm hoping that it picks up traction throughout Ohio, maybe other communities that jump on board. Every little bit helps. The starfish, right?
The shrimp.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed? Motion carries. Thanks again, Ms. Twine.
Thank you.
Other items of new business?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Twine.
Just want to make a public announcement. On this Tuesday, the 19th, at 6:00 p.m. in this room, Commissioner Murray and myself, we will be holding commission hours here on that evening. So, again, that's September 19th, Tuesday, at 6:00 p.m.
Other items of new business? If not, then we will turn to audience participation. Anyone wishing to address the city on any city-related issues, please tap into the microphone and give us your name and share with us your thoughts, please.
Sharon Johnson, 1139 Fifth Street. Have we decided on a site for the Justice Center yet? Or how close are we on that?
We... The city has not made a formal decision. Mr. Wolfser informed me recently that the committee has been meeting, and they are getting pretty close to making a decision, but they're still doing space planning. Or what did you call it? Site fit?
Site plans, fit plans, and cost analysis of the different spaces is ongoing in Director Twine's office. We hope to have more information within the next 30 days or so for the commissioning community.
Okay, thank you. Next one is the City Hall. I understand you're doing a groundbreaking September 27th, so I'd like to know when he gets paid his close to $2 million we're going to give him for startup cost. Has that been paid?
Director Lasco can follow up with you after the meeting.
Nobody can say that now?
No.
There are different parts and pieces that are paid over a period of time, Mr. Lasco. I don't know. I don't recall the details of the contract as we sit here.
I'm happy to, if...
Please, by the way.
Do the Commission President to, Ms. Johnson, construction is anticipated to start modestly this month, hopefully, although we're still in final plan review, but we could certainly issue interior demolition and asbestos abatement permit, so that can start. But we're likely to close on financing within the next five to 10 days. And at that point, the city would disperse the funds to the title company that'd also be matched by the construction loan and the tax credit investors at that time, but probably in the next five to 10 days, the city would disperse a portion of our funds to the project.
Okay, I thought he was telling the cant contract, that all of it, he gets all of it upfront, except for $165,000?
I'd have to go back and look, but there's a couple hundred thousand dollars that would not transfer until early 2018.
Okay. And the last part here, I'm hearing that the Jackson Street pier plans are final, and some of these plans have been shown to a couple of groups, but they left one group out? And I'm just wondering what's going on there?
There will be no final Jackson Street pier plans until this commission takes a vote. The staff continues to work with different interested groups about possible compromises,